We all ready?
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to the November 28th meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. That's November 28, 2017. First order of business as always is public input. Does anyone here have public input on a matter that is not going to be covered in tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I move on to Chair's comments. First thing I want to do, and it can't be repeated enough, that pending favorable action by our board later on tonight, there will be the first annual holiday tree lighting at Lower Common in Stowe, 7:00 PM on Friday, December 1st. It sounds like a fun time. I'm going to allow the person who took over for the board as liaison on this subject, and the, I think, a quinous would say, the prime mover on this issue, Karen Stamps, to tell the board and the people at home a little bit more about this when it comes up on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure that it was covered, because it's going to be a very full weekend for Stowe. Because after you go to the Friday night tree lighting, the next morning, the Women's Club of Stowe will be having their annual breakfast with Santa at the Stowe Community Center. And that is always a lot of fun.
And silent auction.
And a silent auction. In addition, in the back of the community center, the Council on Aging will have a little booth for their holiday decoration sale. And then, after you've filled yourself with cheer the night before and breakfast the morning of, you should all head down to Jollet Stadium where -- you could talk about that too, Karen, if you'd like, when it comes up, because Neshoba will be paying for the Division IV Championship, state championship, against Melrose at 11:00 AM. Now, there's plenty of time to do all three things. You've got to get organized and manage your time wisely. But we want to wish Neshoba the best of luck in the championship. I think I mentioned earlier this year about the remarkable consistency of the Neshoba football program and its success, and that we want to wish all the Stowe players, quarterback, and the best of luck and a good showing. That's all I've got, unless someone thinks I missed something. Then, does anyone have anything that they'd like to bring up in the correspondence, other than the fact that I was addressed as Mayor Burke in one letter?
Do you want to do the minutes first? Asylum?
You know, I always jump ahead to correspondence, but let's get correspondence away. Anything in the correspondence?
You did correct them correctly.
Did you mention?
They used mayor in front of you?
Yes.
We've all --
You did correct them.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I'm sure I will. Well, good. We got that out of the way, then let us now move to the meeting minutes. Does anyone have a motion to make substantive changes opposed to typographical provisions?
Well, if you'd rather have, I've got a couple of small things. Maybe just mention the first, and then we can do it. Motion might be amended.
As you prefer, Mr. Burke.
On page one, under Police Officer Appointments, the first line of the italicized portion, no, second line, excuse me, I think we added the word "successful completion."
Yes.
Assistant would note that.
Good catch. That was Mr. Ryan's point, if I'm not mistaken.
And on page two, tax classification, about six lines down, one that starts with 9657, that line, explained that choosing a number, shouldn't it read "more than one," not "less"? 1.1, 1.1 goes up to 1.1.
Other than one.
I don't think it can go below one.
It depends whether you're talking about the residential factor or the commercial factor.
Right.
On their chart, they had numbers higher than one, so I think you're right.
One is the piece.
Yeah. So, the change would be changed, the word "less" to "more."
Everyone in agreement?
And page three, just to show, Small Farm Liaison Reports, line four, protect small farm, the "farm" should be lowercase as well. That was deliberate, yes. Dwight explained that, in keeping with the name of the establishment, Small Farm, when you note the sign, it's all lowercase. So, we got it half right.
Good to know.
I have one other thing. I do believe that Engerboard was actually here.
He was actually here.
Didn't he say that?
Says I was absent. I know I'm quiet, but I know I was here. I actually said something in the minutes.
Yes, very good catch. I saw Engerburg hunting him, but I didn't see the words "was absent."
Thanks for correcting that one.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Very small things. Page two, under Acid River Rail Trail, fourth line down, it mentions Margie Lynch, pretty sure she spells it with an "IE" rather than a "Y." And I had something else. Oh, the very last page, page four, just above correspondence, beginning with the Eversource Project, third line down, it says "Council present at," I think it should be evidentiary, A-R-Y, as opposed to A-L.
Lead to a lawyer to point that out.
Evidential, evidentiary.
Is everyone in agreement with Mr. Salvich's changes? And I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of November 14, 2017, as amended.
Mr. Salvich's got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? That's unanimous. Now, that brings us to the update on the HeatSmart program. Mr. Epstein would come forward. And let me, while you're stepping your way forward, let me just say that about three months ago, our colleague, Ms. Hengel Clark, kind enough to point out that there were awards available in the state for government groups that did a lot in order to save energy and promote good renewable resources, resourcing in energy use. And she suggested that Mr. Epstein and his group might be candidates. I talked with the town administrator, and I also talked with Arnie electronically about recommending just Arnie, but Arnie, to his credit, selflessly said it should be the entire group that we should submit the award for. We just got word recently that the award application was not accepted, and I feel terrible about that, because it had nothing to do with the Arnie and Stowe Energy Working Group's stellar accomplishments in this area for our community, but it probably had to do with the writing up of the application, which is my own, which was my own.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the selectmen for recognizing the work that the Energy Working Group has done. You know, we feel that that's recognition enough.
Brian, if I may? I think, at least what I read, is they accepted the application, they just weren't a winner. They weren't at the top of it.
Yes, and perhaps I could have been clearer about that. Yes, there were, the award ceremony is what, sometime this week, and State House, and the, we don't know who the award winners were, but I can almost guarantee that they weren't as award-worthy as Arnie and his group.
Well, thank you, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Well, you're hearing an update on the HeatSmart program.
Yes, I am.
And so, enough of my foolishness will get right to you.
Yeah. So, on the HeatSmart application, in August, members of the Stowe Energy Working Group provided an overview of the state's pilot HeatSmart program, and you endorsed our applying to be one of the pilot communities. We subsequently submitted an application and were informed of the selected communities earlier this month. The goal of the HeatSmart program is to increase the adoption of clean heating technologies, particularly heat pumps, by lowering prices through a community-wide initiative. We believed we had an excellent chance of being selected for the pilot program through a combination of very low electric rates, community support, and a terrific team of volunteers. We want to thank the selectmen and Mr. Wiggly for supporting our application. Unfortunately, Stowe was not selected as one of the communities for the pilot. We were told we scored very highly, and it was a difficult decision. We were also encouraged to apply for the next round of the program, where we would be at the head of the list. We were also told the only area where we could have scored higher was incentives for low and moderate income households. Communities served by the large investor-owned utilities, Eversource and National Grid, do have these incentives, including 0% financing and income-based rebates. However, since we are served by a municipal light plant, these incentives are not available to us. I've already spoken to Hudson Light and Power about the situation, and they had previously also endorsed our application. The Stowe HeatSmart team is generally in favor of applying for the next round of the program contingent on continued support of the selectmen. We also will be watching how well a pilot program succeeds in other communities. In that regard, we will be attending meetings and staying in contact with the Bolton-Harvard HeatSmart team, which was selected for the pilot. Questions? It's a disappointing thing to report, but given you had endorsed our application, I felt I needed to tell you how it turned out, and also let you know that we are thinking about and applying for the next round of the program. We think it would be very beneficial for the town, and, you know, if we did want to do that, we would come back to the selectmen and ask for your continued encouragement and support.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Epstein on what he's presented? Mr. Hawkes?
Thank you, Chairman. It seems patently unfair that we're being competitively, collectively, being held to a different standard, something that, here's points, but you can't get them. Is that because, is that a statutory limitation, or is it a policy issue?
The incentives for low and moderate income, that's part of the state's oversight of the large investor-owned utilities. You know, they are under more regulations than the municipal light plants, and so offer incentives such as the ones I mentioned that are not available through the municipal light plants.
Could they be? Are municipals prohibited?
They're not prohibited from it, and as I said at the last board meeting of Hudson Light and Power, I did provide essentially the same overview as I just provided you. I wouldn't, I don't think that Hudson Light and Power believes they would be able to provide incentives similar to the ones that --
Just, thank you, just as a comment, I'm speaking for myself, I'm certainly encouraging you to continue with this, and perhaps at some point, maybe some of us, with the chairman, or we could have somebody from Hudson Light and Power come in here and say, "How come we can't do this?"
We can certainly do that, and, you know, we will sort of put our heads together and see what we might be able to do to provide, you know, additional support for low and moderate income homeowners in Stowe before we would submit the next round.
Thank you.
What's your timeframe on reapplication for the next round?
So, we've asked the head of the program, this, as you know, is the pilot program, so they don't have it set in stone yet when the next round will be. Her best guess was probably late spring or early summer of 2018.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Salvich?
Just out of curiosity, a question and then a comment. Out of curiosity, how many applicants were there, and how many were awarded?
I don't know how many applicants there were. There were four groups of communities that were rewarded. One was Bolton-Harvard, another was Nantucket, Great Barrington, and another was a grouping of --
But there were only four?
There were four.
Yeah. You said this is disappointing news, I can understand why you said that. I have to tell you personally, I don't feel disappointed at all. Certainly not in you or your working group. You're an advocate. We're lucky to have you pointing these things out to us, going after them. You went for a grant pilot program that had four awardees, you didn't get it, and you're going after the next round. I'm not disappointed at all. I feel lucky that you're doing this. I get what they're saying. The incentives are unfortunate, I can do something about that. You've seen before, in the solar project, one of the downsides of having a municipal light plant is that they don't have all the incentives that the investor-owned utilities have. The upside is, I think we have the lowest electrical rates in the state. It's a trade-off, but I'm not disappointed at all. We have you and your group keeping an eye on this, finding these opportunities, seeking these opportunities, and staying with it. So, nice work. Thank you, and I personally, and I think everyone, will completely support you on this.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ryan?
I fully agree with Jim, you know, and it's sounding like you're already at the top of the list for the next go-around, you know, it's, thank you very much for doing what you've been doing on it, and I'm looking forward to you sitting here saying, "We got one."
Well, I hope I'll be able to report that, and, you know, I do think it would be a really beneficial program for the town.
Thank you for persevering. Don't beat yourself up too badly. It may be that I'm just bad luck for you.
Just a quick question.
Oh, yes.
Do they understand that we have it municipal?
They certainly do. In fact, there was a, several go-arounds before they even accepted our application.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, yeah, persevere, I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie.
Thank you for coming by. And now, to the exciting new celebration for our town pending approval by the board. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Karen Stamps. I live here in Stowe. I've lived here for, I want to say, 14 years now. I've come to this town meeting to ask for permission to use the Stowe Lower Common for a annual tree lighting, the first of which would be this Friday.
Who's this guy with you?
This is Don Hux.
A resident of Lakeview, which is our Stowe.
Most important part. Please continue, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem. So, Don and myself have been working together, I think it started last year over coffee?
Well, it started before that.
Was it a little before then?
It started with a letter from Stamps to the board about this time last year, maybe a little later even, and it was, everybody's thought at the time, gee, this is a great idea, but it's too late to do it.
A little too late, yeah.
So, with the encouragement of the chairman, I reached out this year, a little bit earlier, but not a lot. Lots happened in a short time that Karen will point out to you.
Yes, so, so we selected a date, we've talked to area businesses, have great response from people. We've posted on Facebook and other outlets, and everyone seems to be excited. Dunkin' Donuts is donating hot chocolate, Munchkins, Emmis Cafes donating cookies, Honey Pots donating apple cider donuts, mulled cider. Advanced Mechanical Systems is donating their time for, they're doing a playlist of holiday music, PA Systems, speakers, microphone. John is providing the fire pit, yes?
I am, and for which I have a permit?
Permit, yes.
And the wood?
And the wood.
He's good at chopping.
This is fine.
So, we will have marshmallows roasting, right?
I'm going to cut the marshmallow sticks this afternoon.
Yeah. And the Stowe Fire Department is transporting Santa by fire trucks, so that should be exciting.
What approximate time would that be, Karen? Do you know? What time do the festivities begin?
So, 7:00, I believe, we're going to have people gather, and shortly thereafter, 7:15 or so, Santa's going to arrive, and --
On the fire truck.
Yeah, so, about 7:30 or so, we'll have the tree lighting. And the Stowe Highway Department, of course, is doing the lighting of the tree, and we spoke to the --
Santa, I believe, is going to be doing with the assistance.
With Santa, okay. And the Stowe Police Department is closing off the side road, is it Gardner?
Gardner. Is it street or police?
I don't know, Gardner.
Leading to it. So, that is what we have thus far.
No, I think that's pretty much it. Karen has been wonderful in this. She's got good connections and great enthusiasm. I've just been kind of in the background and contacting the public safety departments, and both chiefs have been very supportive of this. I'm sure that we will have some police presence down there. My thought on approaching him, which has responded to in writing now, saying he has agreed to close, some people don't even know it's a street, but it is. Gardner Street.
Road, as I said.
Road, thank you. Stand corrected, yes. But there are certain, few people, not many, that cut through there, one way or another, either to avoid other traffic if they're coming from Red Acre Road. And given that the tree, which is lighted annually by the town, is very close to that little spur of pavement, and you're going to have, hopefully, a lot of kids milling around there, didn't think it was a good idea to have somebody wheeling around to go out of the shopping center or come in through that way. So, they will provide, the Highway Department is going to provide signs that will temporarily close that.
The Chief of Police has authorized the closure of Gardner Road at Red Acre Road and the Stowe Shopping Plaza entrances this evening, 6:30 to 7:45 PM. I assume that's pending favorable action by the board.
We would not presume otherwise.
The other thing I wanted to know, we do have a piece in the newspaper this week about it. I was contacted by Ann Needle.
Oh, good.
She wanted a little background on the tree lighting, and I was contacted by this Stowe Television, they wanted to come there and record it.
That's great. Especially since this is, we humbly label this as the first annual of these, so that once it's on Stowe TV and YouTube, 150 years from now, they'll say, "This is a great tradition." When do you suppose this starts? Let's look it up on YouTube, it'd be there.
That's great. Any thoughts or comments before I take a motion?
And this is what we're sort of advertising.
Then it falls upon me to thank you very, very much, Karen, for coming up with the idea, and all the work that you've done putting this together. The clerk of our board is a little kind when he said, "I encouraged this." I actually just --
I got dragooned.
I just pointed the finger at him. But Don has done a great job, you've worked very well together, and this should be a wonderful addition to our holiday celebrations here in the town of Stowe.
See you all here.
Yeah, come on down, plenty of food, hot chocolate.
Thank you for taking the initiative.
Thank you. Assuming they, they hope to approve it, otherwise we'll scrub the whole thing.
Mr. Salvich?
I'm not going to vote, so I don't get blamed for it.
Mr. Salvich, there seems to be some trepidation. Would you make a motion so we can?
Sure. I want to add something.
alleviate the anxiety?
About the closing of Gardner Road. Mr. Chairman, I move to permit Karen Stamps and other volunteers to use the Lower Common for a holiday tree lighting on Friday, December 1, 2017, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Andrew closed Gardner Road as outlined by Chief Bosworth in his letter dated today.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
With gratitude.
Don, please feel free to vote.
All right.
As unanimous, no extension. Thank you very much, Karen.
Our towns are raising our hand.
For the rest of the family.
Linda had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda. Linda?
I was just curious, it seems like we've done a great job on the Christian side of it, is there anything for the Jewish side?
There was no religious aspect mentioned, either tonight or in any of the literature. This is a holiday tree lighting.
Holiday tree lighting. Although, you know, why don't you think about joining this endeavor next year? And as in Bolton, we can have maybe interdenominational celebrations. We're just getting started.
I was involved far enough back with the library issue and the crash and some other issues. I'll step back for a moment.
Linda, unfortunately, I work for a public agency, and unfortunately, I bumped up against those issues. There's certain holiday symbols that have been recognized, but the court's is secular, and a tree is one of them. Then there's other ones that have been recognized as religious, a crash is one of those. If you have one of those, you have to have others, like a menorah, things like that. I'm assuming we don't have the religious symbols, we're just sticking to a tree. My understanding is that that should be fine.
You know, it's interesting, I saw by a sign in Bolton that they're going to have a Hanukkah candle lighting and a tree lighting. Maybe it's a thought for another day, but, you know, you've taken on a whole lot, and we don't want to suggest that you should be doing more right now. Thank you so much. Then, I think we have that approved? Am I correct, unanimously? So, that would bring our town clerk up. I'm sorry we didn't catch your question on the earlier agenda item, but let me just start off by introducing our town clerk up on the open meeting law, and I've got to say that I had some thoughts about this, because for some, I know the reason, I overlooked our town clerk's email of September regarding the revisions to the regulations in the new statute governing the open meeting law. And our, since then, our town clerk has provided, and our town, Board of Selectmen's Administrative Assistant, has provided us with the emails that our town clerk sent out last month and today, or, excuse me, last Tuesday, excuse me, regarding some of these ideas. I had some thoughts that maybe we could make our Stowe website the primary source of hosting agendas, because I wanted to save people in the town government work from hosting, but as our town clerk points out, that's not going to work out too well. But as our town clerk points out, that's not gonna work out too well because it's in the charter that we post things on the bulletin board outside the town office building. So, maybe that's a thought for another day, but I'm not gonna push it now. But why don't you, Madam Town Clerk, just give us a brief overview of the new regulations?
I also just wanted to give it up, point out that even if we use the website, the town building still has to have the hard copies here. They still have to be available to the public. Posting on the outside bulletin board probably be the best. I mean, you could choose to have a monitor, but I don't see too many people wanting to stand there to see it scroll through. So, anyway, I just basically wanted to let you know that I had read the email, and I was a little disappointed that my October 13th email hadn't been there until lately. So...
That's my fault. And I was just, even if I had received it, I was gonna pose some ideas that weren't covered in your October 13th email, such as using the website, but I hear your points on that. I think it's important to make sure that the entire town government knows that meeting minutes now have to be generated and approved within three meetings or 30 days, whichever is latest. And we need to, as our town clerk has already done, stress that because, and we should follow up, I suppose, to see how the town boards are doing on that. I'm sure our town clerk will let me know. Just one last thought. The other thing is, the new regulations require that executive session meeting minutes be reviewed at regular intervals.
So, a lot of the information that you're stating has actually been in place since 2010. And so, that a lot of the boards, the whole thing about executive session meetings and having review should be periodically. One of the boards, the, I think there are three boards, Planning, Selectmen, and Zoning Board of Appeals, that have probably the most executive session meetings that are outstanding. I know that the boards are in the process of looking them. I think the, there's only Conservation Commission just has a couple, which is relatively new based on either litigation or real estate negotiations. Community Preservation's got theirs taken care of. Open Space had a set of executive session meetings, minutes of last week. But I think the boards are really aware, and they are making the effort to look at those. So, I don't think the issue is that. And the minutes, I think boards are doing them in the best possible manner that they can in trying to get them on the website. And that's one of the things the records access officer, in the position that I'm in, has stressed so that people don't have to ask us for public records requests and that, you know, we're not charging for the time, the copies. They're available online. And I think the boards are making a good effort. If I didn't, my co-superior records access officer...
Co-superior?
It's super, super.
Oh, I see. He is a super guy. You two are the super. You're both super.
We are the heads, and then all the department heads are on their own. If I need it, Bill's my muscle. So...
That's crude words. The enforcer.
But I have a, you know, as I tell people, my bark is worse than my bite, but I've had my rabies shot. So, I mean, I can get, I mean, I don't think that there's an issue. I think that a lot of the boards have already accepted their minutes, the regular standard minutes. There may have some executive session that are outstanding. I think the issue is getting them online, and they're trying to do that in a timely manner. I think most of the boards have them in place. And have accepted them. I don't think there was too much of an issue with that as far as, you brought up some things about... Oh, gosh, I'm looking it here. That, that open meeting law members receive, or boards and committee members receive open meeting law determinations that have been occurred within the past five years. The town of Stowe doesn't have any determinations from the AG's office.
I couldn't...
It's very good about it.
Yep.
Annually, Debbie and I, my assistant and I, we put together a mailing, and we send it out to everybody that they get an open meeting law information, ethics information. Every time that people are appointed, they're getting these packets of information. I can give it to everybody. I cannot make them read it. And I, we do this regularly. And if I thought there was an issue, as I said, people would hear from me. They don't want to hear from me. I'd have Bill go ahead and another one, and then I'd come in for some suggestion like, "Don't reappoint these people if they're not going to participate and do these things." I haven't gotten to that point yet.
Well...
That's very good.
I think the boards are doing a great job.
Okay.
And let me just say that it was my email that prompted this being put on the agenda. I just thought it might need a little attention by the board, but not to suggest in any way that our town clerk, our co-superior records officer, was not on top of these issues. I just thought it might be nice to bring the new regulations to the attention of the entire community. And it's always a pleasure to see our town clerk.
And if anybody wants a copy of them and have some great reading, I'm sure they should get a copy.
The new open meeting law?
The new one, October 2017. Hot off the press.
Did you bring those for us?
If you'd like a copy, you're welcome to have them. Otherwise, there are, I did, it is the link. It is the link.
It's in the email. I just didn't take the time to print it out.
Anybody want the print?
You've got a color version.
You've got the March one, not the October one.
Ooh, sucka.
See, and so this is, maybe it's a good idea that you're here.
Yeah, okay.
She had a peg, buddy.
That's all I do.
She just gave me your name.
That's all I do in these meetings.
She just gave me your name, so you're on my list now.
You almost extricated yourself completely, you know? You're jumping back in it.
I just, you know, I, I, we just try to make sure. My idea is I want to keep our boards and committees out of the press, the bad press, unlike Ashland and Wayland and others that have open meeting law violations on a regular basis. But we do a pretty good job in Stowe, and I'm really pleased with our boards and committees and the volunteers that we have and really do things.
I know you do, and this is an opportunity for us to congratulate you on doing such a great job.
Good spin, Brian. Thank you.
And thank you for coming. As I said before, it's always a pleasure to see you. But I've said enough. Is there anyone on the board who has something to say? New. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Just to prove that I read the material, if nothing else, just to the point that Brian brought up about the 30 days or three meetings. And since I'm, I always do this. I slip into the Latin when I'm sitting between two lawyers. I think it can be taken as prima facie evidence. Is that right?
That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
That it says 30 days will, if they do that, they will have been approved in a time, that's the definition of timely manner, unless the body can show good cause for further delay. For instance, if they haven't met, some seasonal boards might only meet...
It says three meetings or later.
Okay.
Three meetings, 30 days, or within three meetings.
Okay, so if there was...
Whichever is the latter.
So, if there were a hypothetical body that only met during a particular season...
Correct.
They could go three years.
They could go three years.
Correct, technically. But those minutes, even though they're not approved or drafted, are still public records. And they are still, even your notes, if it's just a draft note on a, you know, a little notepad, and this was all the minutes of my meeting, and somebody asked for them, they're public record, and we're required to give them. And that's the other bit of information is, what is a public record, retention schedules? You know, the departments, we're trying to do that ourselves, but is, you know, things only need to be kept. Agendas only need to be kept a year. I advise everybody to get rid of anything you write to the supervisor of public records, to get rid of those items. Do not keep them. If you need to sort for them, I mean, get rid of the electronic as well. Use your minutes. The minutes are the permanent record. Because when we are going to search for stuff, if we have X and we only needed this much, we have to search through everything and give them, and that's a longer, it's more cost and our time and stuff. So, I recommend people using the retention schedule and getting ready. And that is one of the hardest things to do, especially with volunteer boards. That would be my only piece of advice, but, I mean, our boards do a great job.
And touching upon what you said, this is something that our colleague, Mr. Ryan, might want to advise the public safety departments about. As I understand the statute, not just the regulation, but the statute, materials submitted in connection with an application for employment are not public records by exemption to the statute unless the person submits a resume.
But resumes, but you only need to keep the resumes of the ones who, and it's part of the retention schedule, I believe. You only need to keep them for a period of time.
Yeah, no...
And of course, same with correspondence and other stuff. So, there are things that are confidential, some stuff that can be redacted off a document. Other record is still a permanent record. And that's when, if there are questions, then, you know, we ask for advice. Either they come to my office or, you know, somewhere else. And I have, not on speed dial, but I have it pretty close to the attorney of the day at Ethics, Public Records, and the secretary's office, or the AG's office, to ask my questions. And I ask them about the stuff. And one of the other comments that comes up in discussion is, under the public records law, the open meeting law, items that you use in your, in the meeting, that you actually are referenced to and use in the meeting, that you should keep a list at the end of the minutes of what was the document. They don't have to be kept with the minutes, but they could be used. And it's only if it's referenced in the meeting.
Okay, so you did check that out?
Yes, I did. So, if you were saying, "I read your application, and I noticed that such and such, even though the application might not be here, but they were in your packets, you referenced that in a meeting, yes, now that application should be part of that."
However, if I, if I'm correct, it could also be kept, referenced, but it could be kept...
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere. It's just the list that has it. It's not the actual document.
Yeah.
And under the Privacy Act, that would be excluded in any...
Exactly.
Yes.
But you could still reference that it was used.
The upshot is that you have to be very careful when you put something in the packet.
Right.
If it otherwise wouldn't be a public record, you could easily turn it into a public record by putting it in the packet and then talking about it.
Correct.
Because there's a three-part test, and I can remember two of them. It has to be physically present, it has to be specifically referenced, and then something else.
I can't remember that one either.
But it's, when I do a memo to my board, that's protected by the attorney-client privilege until I, until they talk about it at a public meeting. And then it's all out there.
Right.
So, it's, it's tough.
The other point, the other point to the documents you say, for instance, the planning department came, and they had plans, and you don't need to keep the plans. They can keep the plans because they're the originating agency, and they have the plans as permanent record in their file. You can reference and say it in your minutes. The planning department's plan filed in their office or something, you know? So, it's, you don't have to, Concom doesn't need a set of plans, and Planning Board doesn't need one, and Selectmen doesn't need one, or whatever. So, there are some issues that are interesting.
For me, the instructive part of all of this is that individual departments, individuals within individual departments, it's not necessary to remember all of this because the process allows for us, and there's corrections that can be made, there's nothing in here that's so restrictive that there isn't the opportunity or the time to make corrections, to protect something, to change what had been done. So, that sometimes people panic hearing all of this, that it's so restrictive, but it isn't.
Right.
And we've got the staff who have the knowledge, and we also have references to our own attorneys and to state attorneys and to all of the rest, whether it's the open meeting law or the public records law.
Everything.
Don't panic. Adjust. If mistakes made, we can correct it unless it was a willful intent to obstruct the law or to ignore it.
Right.
And I've been here 25 years, and I haven't seen one of those yet. So, you know, read it at your leisure, to the degree you can remember it. And if you want to leave it at your bedside, that's fine, but don't be concerned that everybody has to be worried that they understand and can follow all that.
And that's why we are, my office and others are available to help and answer, and they ask questions. If I don't know the answer, like I say, I call the attorney of the day. It's free legal advice. And that's what they're there for, and they're providing us. They're the ones that would be reviewing the information anyway if there is a complaint. And there's a lot of information available online and regional trainings as well. So...
Well, if I, if I'm correct, also that when the attorney of the day gives you, I'll call it a ruling or advice, it is essentially, you know, it's, it's pretty much binding. It keeps you out of trouble.
Yeah, especially if that's through the Ethics Commission.
Right.
As long as you told them everything.
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
Ms. Hagan, Clerk, did you have something?
I do. It's not really an open meeting law question as much as it is a process question. When we get applications, on those applications, we do see confidential information. And they're given to us in hard copy, and they're brought home. They're left in our cars, and they're left out someplace. And I'm wondering, and obviously, it's incumbent on us to treat that information confidently, but I'm wondering if there's a way that certain confidential information can be...
Redacted?
Yeah, before we even get it.
Get them.
Or before it's posted.
I don't, to be truthful with you, this was a convenient, when I, years ago, we never provided that to the board. Some board members had asked for more information in detail, and so the chiefs particularly felt committed to providing the actual copies of it. My view is that I suggest that we don't do that anymore. The cover letter by the chiefs fill in everything. If you've got a question, you might want to go down and check the application.
I agree.
But it was really, and I, to tell you the truth, I went along with it, and I perhaps shouldn't have, looking back at it because it just exposed us to something we otherwise wouldn't need to. And it puts you in a compromising position, as you said.
I agree.
Oh, I thought you said you disagreed.
No, I agree. I don't have a shredder at home, so I...
I don't either.
When I accidentally take a hard copy home, I'm sure the chair has a room full of them, but, you know.
Yeah. I just like Woodstow.
I was gonna say, you've got a fireplace.
I have a fireplace.
That's true. That's true.
Well, we don't have to belabor the point. I think the action item here is that, to the extent we need to see it, let's proactively, what is the word, dedact, redact?
Redact.
Redact certain information that's really none of our business.
Or if you don't, if you don't...
And it's not decision-making information, so...
Right.
All right, so is that a consensus on the board? And with our town administrator's recommendation? So, we're not gonna, you show, Mr. Ryan, you should tell the chiefs and...
I'll send a letter.
And you can send a letter that we're not gonna see the application.
Well, any, anything we have to approve.
Any, anything subject to privacy, and I'll, I'll work. Don't worry about it.
Okay, the application materials, but that still means that the cover letter has to be very complete.
You'll get, you'll get sufficient information. If you don't, let me know.
Right.
I hope we can understand what it is you'd like to receive so you can make an informed decision on a candidate with a recommendation.
The last few letters I've, I'm sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you, Mr. Town Administrator. The last few letters I've read regarding public safety applicants, I thought were from the chiefs, were very incomplete and helpful. But I'm glad we've got that squared away.
Otherwise, I appreciate you having come and taking the time to bring this to our attention, and then we can remove it all.
Well, yes, we can.
No.
I can try to add something.
You were the one who said that I can cut conversation off.
That's true.
Ms. Hagan, Clerk, that's a point.
You're no longer chair. Very quick, there was one point you made I really agreed with, which is that the open meeting law lets us use the bulletin board downstairs. That's the legal requirement for the postings. And I, I don't know why we would ever change that and make it more difficult for ourselves. Now, we do have this new website. It's a great tool. In the 21st century, that is how people expect to get information. Everyone should be encouraged to use it and use it more. We can even be better about it, but I would, I would not want to make it, we'll just ask for trouble to make it the legal requirement.
We're, I, I think we're making every effort to get more of this stuff up there.
Right.
And everybody, we're learning, and there's more people that are doing it and learning stuff all the time. So, I think there's going to be more information up there.
I think that we've said all that needs to be said at the point, other than, thank you again, Madam Town Clerk, for coming and seeing us.
I'll see you next month when I'm here for a bond signing.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Oh, when's my next holiday party?
If you'd like to stay, we're going to take it up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Linda. As usual at this time of year, the Stowe Highway Department is going to try and hold a holiday, holiday party at the Highway Barn. And I guess they've selected a date that they've asked us for a special liquor license on. Friday, December 8th. a date that they've asked us for a special liquor license on, Friday, December 8th, um, 2:00 to 6:00 P.M. Is there anything that, uh, Mr. Town Administrator, we need in addition to this application before acting upon?
Only as much as you need to feel comfortable in giving it out. Do you feel comfortable in giving it out?
Well, we've been doing it for quite some time. Mr. Ryan-
That should provide all the comfort you need.
Mr., oh, then I turn, as always in these matters, to Mr. Ryan. Any thoughts, any comments?
Um, my comments are this, I don't think we even need to give him a liquor license, but if the board feels that that's required. I, I still have heartburn over signing a license that says that they can sell it when they're specifically not selling it, but-
All right, Mr. Town Administrator.
They've, they've been doing a fine job. It's, and it's a, really a town employees' slash highway department party, um, you know, that, uh, they've been doing for a number of years.
Yeah. What about that point, Mr. Town Administrator? Do we need to approve a liquor license?
Well, it's not necessary under the statute as I read it. However, some years back, there was a member of the board, or maybe perhaps more than one, and I had forgotten how long ago that was, that felt it was at a layer of security-
He wrote it beforehand.
In two ways. One is that the chief elected officials knew that the party was being held. I wish, in fact, they provided them with a permit. And second of all, it does, it does no harm to provide the permit, because the permit you're given with a special liquor license, as Tom says, relates to selling, and there will be no selling. However, providing alcohol, again, there'll be the term, you signed it, you acknowledge it and accept it, and I don't object to any of that added safety, I suppose.
Kind of an abundance of caution, I think.
I'll, I'll make a-
So I don't, I don't think it's worth, we, we debated it back then for too long, in my opinion.
We've done it several years.
Um, it takes, it'll take longer time for me to explain what we went through than it will if you just take the vote, give it to us.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
As long as, okay, that's all I wanted to hear. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Heggman, I move to approve and sign-
Why don't you just address it all to Ms. Heggman?
All right, that's fine.
That's what he wants to do.
I move to approve and sign a special one-day liquor license for the holiday party for Stowe Highway Department employees to be, and other town employees to be held at the Highway Barn on Friday, December 8th, 2017, from 2:00 to 6:00 P.M. and to waive fee of $25 a month.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Salvi, it's all right. I'm no longer chair. I'm the mayor.
Oh, you're the chairman.
All those in, all those in favor of Mr. Salvi's motion for the special liquor license, even though it's not needed technically, for the Highway Department for December 8th from 2:00 to 6:00 P.M.? In favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. That's unanimous. Uh, okay.
You're not gonna sign it first?
I was like, no. I could sign at the bottom, I guess.
Uh, now that brings us to the Class II common vitular, or vitler license renewals.
Vitular.
I think it was vitler, but okay.
We've had this debate-
Been watching too much, uh-
Beverly Hill.
Yeah. When you start remembering the vitular debates.
All right. Who would like to lead us on this?
I will, I'm gonna take the first motion, and then I will yield the floor to my distinguished caller. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, to renew the town's common vitular license, licenses for the following businesses for 2018. Pasta Donuts 2, Inc., 626 Great Road. Stowe Cafe, 118 Great Road. Delta Epsilon, Inc., DBA Stowe House of Pizza, 156 Ro, Great Road. Dunkin' Donuts, 117 Great Road. And Emma's Cafe, 117-
No, no, no. I think if you look at the revised minutes, uh, we, we don't have some paperwork on Emma's. Is that correct, Madam Administrative Assistant?
Just waiting for some paperwork.
All right, then I-
Sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Clark.
Delete, I deleted the last part, so we, we stopped, the motion stopped at Dunkin' Donuts.
Anyone have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? All those in favor of-
Mr. Chairman, uh, we, we don't meet again in December.
The 12.
12.
Oh, that's right. So will, will we, do we expect to have whatever we need at Emma's?
Yep, I think we'll be ready.
Thank you.
All those in favor of Mr. Hawke's motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that brings us to the Class II used car license renewals for 2018. Uh, Mr. Clark, do you want to bring us through that?
Now, Mr. Salvi. I'll, I'll make this motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the town's Class II licenses for the following businesses for 2018. Patterson Auto Body, Inc., 18 Great Road. Import/Export of Boston, 8 Whitman Street. Auto Support Engineering, Inc., 370 Hudson Road. Great Road Fuels, 368 Great Road. Richard Presty Chapel Partners, Inc., 102 Great Road. EGL Automotive Corp., DBA Hudson Road Auto, Inc., 380 Hudson Road. Dennis Paul Scaffidi, Infinite Detail and Accessories, 102 Great Road. And Key Cars, 370 Hudson Road.
Second. And I take it it's a friendly amendment, because it's, it's not listed in, at least what I see here in the proposed motion, but it's to renew the town's Class II used car license.
Um, yes, as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion or comment?
I have a question.
Certainly.
What is a Class II used car license?
Good question. Mr. Town Administrator, do you have any-
Used car license.
That's the way, I think we have somebody.
That's what Class II-
Yes, I'm sorry. Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Mark Ford, 981 Road. Question on 102 Great Road. Issuing two licenses for the same property?
Oh, you're not answering your question. You're giving, you're asking another one.
That's correct.
Uh, why don't, why don't we make sure that my colleague's question's been answered to her satisfaction?
Then we have to, okay.
Uh, you heard from our town administrator. Do you require additional information on that?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's a used car license.
That's all it is. But we just called Class II. Thank you. Okay. Now, you had a comment about this?
No, I just, I thought you were asking the highest.
Oh, no, no.
All right, I'm sorry. Now we'll take your question.
Okay. So my question is, you're issuing two licenses to the same property, 102 Great Road, one for Chapel Partners, and one for Mrs. Scapaldi, I believe that's pronounced.
Scaffidi.
Scaffidi. Uh, is that, is that against the town's zoning rules? To issue two licenses at the same property?
Do you have the provision that-
We do not have the license.
Uh, would be more, it would be helpful. We could give you a better answer.
Are they two separate businesses in the same building?
To the same building, same address, same 102 Great Road, Mr. Salvi, the stated-
Is it, is it two separate businesses, or are you saying it's-
As far as, as far as I know, Chapel Partners does not do any, any car sales out there whatsoever.
But I, I believe technically they are two separate. The question of the zoning, I don't, I have a suspicion, I know the answer, but I think the zoning agent, if that legitimate question needs to be answered, that there's zoning there.
Well, there are two ways we can handle this. We can, because we didn't get any advance notice that this might be a concern, we could, uh-
I didn't realize, I didn't realize, I apologize. I didn't realize it was two licenses being issued at the same time, so-
Fair enough. Uh, but I, we can withdraw those two, or we can act upon those two and leave it to anyone in the community to contact the zoning enforcement agent.
Can I suggest something else, maybe?
No, maybe I haven't thought of all of them.
Well, we know that infinite detail is a active business.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
And Chapel Partners, Inc., I think is the one that I think we have some question about whether there's a separate business or what. Unless these are, I, I assume these are expiring at the end of calendar year, so we have at least one meeting to go. We could act on, on infinite detail and hold chapel-
There is a description under-
One at a time.
Just to answer your question, about Chapel Partners. If you'd like me to read what that is. Entire paved portion of 102 Great Road from area between western boundary, Route 117 on north, building on east, plus portion of main building for mechanical repairs.
Do we have the application or the paperwork for the, uh, Presti Chapel Partners?
These are comments from the various departments. Are you looking for the actual applications?
The application.
Yeah. I can grab them if you want to see them.
Could, could I suggest, only because that may not, I think, resolve the question he's asking, but these are renewals essentially, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So they've been previously approved, and the question of whether they're, one is performing sufficient work, is I think that's it. And the zoning question, Jim, I think, offers one alternative, which is you can hold on until the next meeting, or you can approve them subject to the zoning question being resolved by the zoning agent, by the, in advance of the next meeting. And I'll leave that to you guys.
Testify with me, too.
Look, the, the, can I just ask another clarifying question? The, this is for, it says to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. If these businesses aren't doing that, why do they need these in the first place?
It allows them, would allow the holder of the license to do so if the occasion arose.
But their application doesn't ask for that. I, I'm, I'm just pointing this-
You have the application in front of you? I thought she had them in the other room.
No, I have the, I'm assuming that the description was based off information provided by the application.
Yeah, or provisions made way back when they began.
Oh, okay, so somewhere in the file.
I'm not sure if it originates, yeah.
All right, okay.
Let me, let me just put it this way. Because there is a question about the, only about the Richard Presty Chapel Partners application?
That's correct.
Then why don't we just hold that for our next December meeting, unless, let me just finish my thought, and then you can argue with me. Hold that for the next meeting, and in between now and then, we can see the application if there are questions. We can also check the zoning law and see what is or isn't allowed. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, motion in second.
Two-point.
And I would suggest that perhaps in light of the town administrator's comments, that I would take as a friendly amendment under my second, if the words contingent upon resolution of that question. Will you get to the-
Well, you and the chair are making two different suggestions. I, I actually like just the cleaner one of holding off on one until the next meeting, assuming that no one's license is going to expire between now and then. And I'm, so, these licenses expire the end of 2017, correct?
That these current ones expire January 1st, 19, which would imply that the current one expires January 1st, 18.
So I'm, I mean, I'd be inclined to amend my motion to exclude from it Richard Presty Chapel Partners, Inc., 102 Great Road.
Uh, what say you to that, Mr. Hawke?
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Any other thoughts? All right.
Clean way to do it.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry. I have a question. If we have a problem with the property, why are we only selecting one of the businesses? I, I don't, I'm, I'm just having a problem.
So there's no problem with the property. It's, I think it's the application for the used car license.
By just one of these entities?
By just one of the entities.
But it's a current operation. These are both currently operating.
The zoning question seems to be whether you can issue two licenses to the same property.
I believe you can, by the way.
Well, they, they clearly must have them, but these are renewals.
And, and these are renewals, so that they, we've done them each year.
Mm-hmm.
Remember?
I, I will go along with the motion, but I think something's just a little funny, that's all.
Well, we'll get to the bottom of it between now and December 12.
We will. Yes, that sounds great.
Thank you.
That make sense to everyone? Although those are valid concerns, Ms. Heggman-Clark. We appreciate you bringing them forward. Then, all those in favor, unless there's further discussion, all those in favor of the motion as friendly amended, uh, for the remaining Class II used car licenses, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. That's unanimous. And our administrative assistant will get us the application, and maybe the town administrator can find out about the zoning question. So why don't we just make sure we hold that one?
Sure.
Okay, good. All right, we're still making good time, not as good time as I'd hoped. But that brings us to, if I'm not mistaken, the Board of Selectmen 2018 meeting schedule. And it's, if I can just point out or observe, it's fairly standard, our second and fourth Tuesday, uh, meeting schedules. I think our administrative assistant wanted to bring to our attention that we're having a very late town meeting this year, and a very late town election this year, so that we wouldn't be meeting until after the first half of, or when I say this year, I mean, of course, this coming year. So in May of 2018, we wouldn't have a meeting until after the first half of the month. And then it's usually a perfunctory meeting.
I beg your pardon. Certainly not perfunctory when we-
I apologize. It's a limited agenda.
When we chose someone who has now been elevated to mayor, that was, that was fairly significant.
It's a reorganization meeting.
Obviously, that, yes. And I apologize if I said perfunctory. Uh, that was incorrect. I should have said limited agenda, the reorganization meeting.
When is town meeting?
May 7th.
May 7?
First Monday of May.
I would just like to add a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Of course. You've corrected me quite sagely and appropriately.
This is not a correction. It's commendation. Um, I think Maureen is to be, and Phoebe is, we're not sure working together on this. This is a very thorough analysis of our schedule for next year. So hitting off any potential questions of, wow, wait a minute, what about this and such certain holidays? I think it is very helpful to have this presented in this format. So thank you. And thank Phoebe, too, for this, Maureen.
I will say that again. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone think that we need to have an earlier meeting in May?
Well, we'd presumably have one the first night of town meeting, I mean, a half-hour meeting.
So we could always add one, a special meeting if needed.
No, this is just the regularly scheduled ones. We could have one every week if it was so desired.
It's almost three weeks.
One at a time.
Sorry. April 24th and 16th is a long time.
Well, why don't we see where the town business is, and then, as Mr. Ryan points out, we can schedule a special one.
I agree with that.
Uh, with, and that would still be chaired by Ms. Heggman-Clark, and I would still be the mayor. Then do I have a motion?
Do we even need a motion?
Yes. I move to approve the proposed 2018 Selectmen's meeting schedule as, as submitted, as noted.
Second. And that would be the notation, the, the proposed meeting schedule prepared by our administrative assistants that was submitted with the packet for tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. And, yes, let me echo our clerk's point, and appreciate the work you did on that, Maureen. Uh, now, that brings us to the town administrator's report. Thank you for being so patient, Mr. Town Administrator.
Oh. As the board knows, I've been working probably since March of this year. And it's a continued effort of mine to increase the efficiencies and cost-effectiveness of our operations, working with Highway and the Cemetery trustees and their respective superintendents to come up with a working agreement which intends to make revenues of our men and equipment just operationally. I gave you a copy of the MOA. I'm not going to go through, but I think it's, I hope it's succinctly clear in what it is doing, but equally as important what it isn't doing. Um, and so that the trustees felt comfortable that this is strictly limited to sharing of existing manpower and equipment, day-to-day operations, getting work done more efficiently and cost-effectively. It didn't at all affect, doesn't, and it's not intended to, and won't, as long as I'm here, at all encroach on the policies, the planning, or budget, including the use of their two special funds, which is the perpetual care and sale of lots.
Which are segregated by statute.
Right. And so, simple working agreement. Um, we've met several times. They voted at their last meeting. Just wanted to give it to you, because I know I've been mentioning it in general terms. And it's the simplest way. Some towns, for example, have taken their cemetery, smaller towns, many of our neighbors have taken their cemetery department and folded them into their DPW or the highway, for cultural and traditional purposes, and for cultural and traditional purposes, and the importance that the few that seem to carry interest with regard to the cemetery department is to keep that separate. And so, I own that expectation, at the same time, as long as this affects the outcome that I'm interested in, which is force multiplying and no extra cost, which we've been doing in any event, and continue to do in well with our facility departments I mentioned there, get more out of our resources. And that's essentially what it is, and.
It's a force multiplier. I think I have also referenced in my role as liaison to the Cemetery Committee that this MOA was coming down the pipe, and I congratulate you and the Highway Department and the Cemetery Committee for getting together and working this out amicably and cooperatively. And I know that you missed the meeting, which I reported on my inter-community cemetery visit. I could fill you in if you wanted to stay after the meeting.
I'm good.
Okay. Yes, we are aware that some department, excuse me, some municipalities have rolled in their cemetery functions, larger departments, but this will keep us where we need to be going for the foreseeable future, correct?
I agree. And again, as a practical matter, we have been doing, but now it's formalized more in as much that Highway Superintendent, Cemetery Superintendent are meeting regularly, but formally no less than once a week, and I get a report on Monday.
Yep.
About what they're doing the next week, and how they're cooperating, and I know for a fact that that's happening. With winter coming, facilities will play a role because of snow removal, so Highway, Cemetery, this is the formal arrangement, and Facilities are working at fire indirectly with their One Piece. So they've been keeping, this began two years ago, but I have no complaints about the fact that we're getting more snow cleared, including the municipal lots at an earlier time than we had ever before. And with POMPO online now, which adds, and that's not an easy lot to clear quickly because of the angles and divides and buffers, but it's working well. Everybody's without any real oversight beyond those departmental level hits of getting the job done and doing it efficiently, so.
Well, thank you very much for riding hard on that, Mr. Town Administrator. Yes, my thoughts.
Just as an example, I saw in connection with the tree lighting, that Cemetery was doing the cleanup, either yesterday or today. Just, not that it was litter or anything, but just making sure, if you'll pardon the expression, I have to use this line, since it's around the holiday tree, we wanted to spruce up the area.
It's descriptive.
Very good, Don.
I think you're trying Ms. Hagman-Clark's patience, Mr. Clerk.
No, I thought that was fine.
Concise.
Anything else?
I have a couple of items. One last point with regard to the integrated departmental work conditions is that the one bane of my existence over the years, and I think it's true of all managers.
Other than me?
It was unsaid.
Necessary.
Personnel issues. And so, setting expectations with personnel when they begin to take on roles that they customarily and historically hadn't been asked to, and that's whether it's a union or not. It's more formal a difficult task when it's unionized, because you change working conditions by definition, and that's it. So, I caution everybody that's involved in that to say, look, there are going to be times that we have to sit down and come to Jesus meeting, or we have to reset expectations, or whatever it is. And that's my role, but to date, it's been minimal. It doesn't mean it won't occur from time to time, depending on the personnel involved. Was that term, probably not. Probably a kid.
I think we know what you're trying to say, Mr. Town Administrator.
So, anyway, last point. So, next item for you is that I want to update all of you, particularly Don, on the continued work at the Lake Boone Dam inspection. Weston and Sampson is the town's consulting engineer on this effort. As you know, there are some date deliverables with regard to DEP, and they are being met. I did provide you a copy on what they call re-inspections. We had two re-inspections since the original inspection that precipitated development of this order in 2012. It came in February, it came in September. And so I provided that to you, the cover letter went to DEP on the last one. What's important there and instructive is the existing conditions that are summarized, and then the Phase 2 work, which is due late December by Weston and Sampson to DEP, which essentially is going to identify and define the nature and extent of the problem. They're doing subsurface work. There's hydraulic and hydrological work being done, the analysis of the structures, including what had been a dike that no one was quite certain was serving such purpose. So, that will all be complete. What I've read from the initial inspection is that, you know, for an earth and dam of that age and that construction, there's some weeping going on, and some settling in the riprap in some areas, and the outlet's going to have to be probably reconstructed some, but I always worry about these things, about the nature of the dam itself, because it's more, they're more closely scrutinized now, dams, particularly older earth and dams. And it doesn't take much for all of a sudden, someone saying, geez, that dam's got a, you know, substantially it's got a bigger problem than just the, you know, plugging and rest of it. But right now, there's no, I see nothing that tells us that's not what it's going to be, which is just some updating, improvements, cutting and pasting, and the rest of it. And then finally, I would say that I should be signing by, I hope by the end of the week, the Mass DOT contract gets started with the lower village on that. I don't expect much will be done, other than site preparatory work between now and the end of the construction season, and maybe next pre-engage, but, and that's it.
On that, Jim, on that last comment, this had one of the portable signs out there, warning of traffic delays, was that premature?
Well, I think they wanted to give a heads up because they were hopeful that Mass DOT would have signed off weeks ago, but hadn't. I have my own thoughts on why, maybe that had to do with money, but that's my own thought, if it happens that way. But we've got every, we've had everything in for some period of time, and now the word is, by the end of the week, they'll have put their name on it, and then I can put mine on it, and then the notice to proceed will go out to ETL, and then they control the site. So they will determine how much, if any, work they're going to do, but I can't imagine at this point, I mean, the plants might still be open, but I don't think they want to expose that road to anything that the wind is going to, you know. So I'm thinking some tree clearing and some other site prep work, that's my whole thought.
There's a big poster at the Still Post Office about it, too. Any further questions or comments for our town administrator on his report? Seeing none, then I would ask my colleagues if they could allow our town administrator to proceed to the Friendly Town orange.
Is that debatable?
All right. If I first apologize for my indelicate comment earlier.
Which one?
Which one?
Explain it to me again.
Maybe that should be a standing apology.
There you go.
I will if you will get me out of here tonight.
All right, that brings us to liaison reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Salvi tonight, because I want to hear about plans for the Complete Streets, if they're going to have that, still have that public hearing on Wednesday, December 6th? Or won't you know until after the next meeting, which is?
Dear, I'm not aware of a public hearing on Wednesday, December 6th. They're talking about a public forum in January, right?
Jesse was here last, he was talking about December 6th, for having that public forum, not public hearing, sorry, public forum, thank you. And he, the planning department actually reserved the community center, I know, for that Wednesday.
I don't think.
But if they're not going to be able to do it, that's fine.
I don't think, there was a meeting this morning, I was only able to stay for the first hour, but my understanding is that the public forum is aimed for sometime in January.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Well, I can double check on that, I'm not 100% sure about that. But I want, but Complete Streets did meet their, you know, they have a consultant, they are sort of prioritizing what the destinations in town are, that you want to improve transportation to, you know, what kind of users. The most important thing, of course, in addition to the public forum, the thing that we talked about at the last meeting was that WikiMap. The WikiMap is on the, is active. You go to our town website, it's the first thing under News and Announcements, you click on that, and you get.
On the planning board, or?
No, on the front page, on the news announcements, the first thing, and you get this little map of Stowe.
No longer there.
No longer there, and you click.
Jesse showed it to us last time.
Right. You click on add points, and it's very easy to do, I've done it, if I can do it, you can do it. And you, if you think there's a sidewalk needed, Streets do now, or you think handicap accessibility is needed someplace, you add that, and people are starting to do it. So that's Complete Streets. The CPC met last night, they are, obviously there's no applications in for funding yet, it's pretty early. They continue to work on their CPC report, their sort of policy statement document. Right now, they are struggling with the affordable housing part. There's good policy discussions going on, they, you know, are in favor, by their act, they have to fund not only low-income housing, which is what SMT is mostly concerned with, but moderate income housing, so they need to go beyond that. It's not just houses that are, that count for the SHI. Library trustees met last night, but they're meeting the same time as CPC, so I couldn't go. POMPO, I did get a final report, draft final report, from the building inspector. I've contacted members of the committee, trying to find a date that everyone can meet, targeting next week, December 5th, 6th, 7th. I haven't gone through all the results, I haven't heard from all the voting members, I'm having a hard time coming up with a date that a corm can meet. I think I got one, though, but we are moving toward a final meeting on that. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much for your hard work on liaising with those committees. Mr. Hawks?
I'm drawing a blank, this is not uncommon, but last night, I traveled to the Feierberg Bedford for two and a quarter hours' presentation on that, remember the marijuana forum that we saw the handout on last time? I can't remember the, it was put on by a private firm, and it was, it was interesting in that it was a very different emphasis. Mr. Salvi and I, and maybe others, have attended other programs dealing with recreational marijuana coming at us, and the Cannabis Control Commission, et cetera. But it was all slanted from kind of a defense position, about this is what you want to watch out for, and you might want to try this, or you might want to have moratorium, which we did in moratorium. And, you know, various, how do you ensure, basically against missteps? This one, by the nature of its sponsorship, was proactive. How do you, and it was geared toward communities. It was about 40 people in the room, they arranged people from the Birch Years to Haverhill, City Councilors Gloucester, and Belmont was represented, so it was kind of a widespread. But it was very much a go-get-'em kind of speech, and of course, if you want to go, because they are emphasizing the tax revenue, which could be generated under the law, which will be up, you know, 3%, and there's a 3% host agreement that you can have for five years, and all kinds of carrots being held out there. And of course, the way, the not very sub rosa.
Sub rosa?
Intent of all of that was, if you can correct me if that's incorrect, you use after you hear the rest of it, hire us to come in, and we will facilitate through all of the swamp of regulations that are sure to follow. So it was, I do have a lot of material, which I'm going to pass on to Mr. Stedman for his files, and, but it was, I hesitate to use the word propaganda, so I won't. But it was what you would expect from a consulting firm.
Well, thank you very much for going out of your way to attend that meeting and bringing back that information. If I'm not mistaken, I know you're not finished, but I want to just talk on this one point. If I'm not mistaken, our administrative assistant will correct me if I am, Mr. Stedman, our planning official, will be here the next meeting to talk about this, and so you'll have some great questions for him. Yes, but please continue.
As it was noted in this space, when last we met, the Tri-Town was meeting the next night we did, in fact, and we expressed thanks to our chairman's daughter Gwen, or her own baked goodies, that made it more festive, that the meetings are, I think, more meaningful now, and it's due in large part to the school committee and administration being proactive and coming up with, I think, very helpful reports from superintendent, and opening a dialogue from anybody that's there about some of the materials, things that are going on. And of course, we're coming into the budget season, and Superintendent Clunchy gave a calendar, which I didn't bring with me, but I think that they expect to have very preliminary budget, initial pass, probably before the end of the year, but with full of caution that this is very, don't take it as, it's going to have a lot of work done to it, so that if you see some number being, I'm sure it will be transmitted to us in the near future, don't, whatever that is, don't get too excited about it either way, but we will certainly keep everybody informed. The next meeting was going to be held in December in a new facility in Lancaster, but that building is not ready yet, and more importantly, nobody could think of pressing matters to hold another Tri-Town during the holiday season, so the next meeting will be in January in Lancaster.
What a shame.
And finally, I've already mentioned the name of the body of water, so I won't mention it again.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I have to, since it's in the title of my report. Lake Boone Commission will meet in this very spot tomorrow night, so those of you who are dying to know what's going on with process of rules revision and procedure there, attended there, too, please join us tomorrow night, 7:00.
Nothing is more important to this town. Mr. Ryan?
I ended up going down to the Gobbler Thursday morning. What seemed to go off without a hitch was, you know, I got down there probably about 6:30, everything was cooking right along.
This was on Thanksgiving Day.
Thanksgiving morning, yes, it's 6:30 a.m.
God bless you.
And, you know, the folks who ran it were down there ahead of time, they were also down there the day before, handing out shirts and so on, but my understanding, they sold out, and it was over 1,000 people.
Wow. More than it was last year.
Wow.
That's wonderful. Great.
So it's, and the police and the fire, you know, Fire Department had a couple of MPs down there, Police Department has it down to a science at this point. Chief Bosworth led off the crowd promptly at 8:00, and we had multiple officers down there, and they were hopscotching, so.
He led off the crowd, he was in running gear?
Yeah, yep. He pulled the cruiser behind him. But he, you know, Chief Bosworth has been down there, you know, at least the last five or six years that I recall, so it's, you know, it went off very well, and, you know, there were a few people, I think, they got a little upset when there were large crowds of people crossing 117 multiple times, and therefore, traffic was stopped, but it goes pretty quick, and, you know, the police did a fine job of keeping the traffic moving, and I didn't see anybody that got too upset about that. But like I said, by 9:00 in the morning, pretty much the Boe's parking lot was cleared out, and I was home at that point, but, you know, they did a, did a fine job as usual.
Thank you for your, thank you for your extra work of liaising. Madam Chair?
Well, so SMT is meeting tomorrow night, I also thought at this very spot, so we're going to have to both look at our agendas.
Town clerk will, see, we.
I'll tell you where to go.
But in any event.
You've done that before, right, Linda?
We'll figure it out.
She's not shy about doing that.
Usually, we're here. Usually, we're here only because we're televised, and you're not.
We're not televised.
I'll put you in the third floor.
We'll figure it out.
Third floor, yes.
But they're televised, yes. We do this.
So I don't have an update on that. There's a very full agenda, though I do know that. The rec committee met last week. I was unable to go. I know that the Lake Boone, excuse me, the Pine Bluffs project has been moving forward. I'm wrong with any of you that have been down there, but they've done a lot of work down there. I think they're now, I don't know this for a fact, but they may be working on some of their capital projects for the upcoming years. And then Conservation Commission met with their FinCom liaison for last time. So that process of budgeting and having a FinCom liaison has started with those two groups. And that's my report.
Thank you very much for your liaison.
If you're quick, Brian, you can get us out of here by 8:30.
Oh, dear. There's a challenge. Go.
Always a pressure. EverSource, the evidentiary, evidential meeting, hearings are closing. I'm going to talk with the town administrator about preparing some kind of a brief that, of course, would be submitted and approved by my colleagues, but-
That you would prepare or our attorneys would?
I would prepare in the first instance, and then I would circulate it to the town administrator. And of course, to be filed, it would have to be filed and reviewed by town council. Don't worry about that.
When did that happen? Did you're writing the brief?
I'm, not so much writing the brief, but thinking about ideas for the brief that I'd share with the colleagues, with my colleagues. I mean, what do we want to say in it?
Well, we would need to bring that up at the next meeting.
Right. We need to bring it up at the next meeting, and it's useful to have some kind of a draft to work from.
So we'll be discussing this before you submit it to anybody?
Yes, yes. Or I will submit, I might have the town administrator take a look at it first. But don't worry, I really know my, the limitations on my brief on that subject. The, but I've got to check the schedule and, believe me, I will do nothing, we might even have to, might even have to have a meeting. It turns out that, I know, now that we've gone beyond 8:30, I will say it.
You don't have till 9:00, Brian.
I don't have till 9:00. I won't take till 9:00. But the mitigation issue, none of the other towns who are intervenors have briefed it. So it doesn't look like it's a live issue, at this point at least. It's, that's all I have except two things. Come to the tree lighting, holiday tree lighting this Friday night in Stow Lower Village and-
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. And be prepared. Next meeting is going to be a long one.
It is?
Afraid so.
All right, I'll take my chill pill.
I wanted to get Jesse in here tonight, but there's going to be a lot of stuff I think we're going to need to cover.
You may want to start to think about the second meeting in December, if you haven't already. The fourth Tuesday is the day after Christmas.
That's not scheduled.
Yeah, I'm having him, I just want him to think about whether he wants to have it, whether he wants to do it Charlie, to do a skip it.
We're having a meeting on December 16th?
12th.
12th, I mean, thank you.
Yep.
December 12th.
That is the only one scheduled.
That's the only one scheduled.
Go back to what we did a year ago tonight, approximately. Assume that there would only be one meeting at the second.
I don't know, I just want-
I, 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 no, she is. The, yeah, no, and that's another reason why I was saying it's going to be a big agenda next, next meeting. I'm sorry, but that's just the way it turned out. But I'm sure our chair will move us along.
That's why we get the big bucks.
Thank you again for all your hard work, colleagues.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous consent.